We have three items on the agenda today and we will try to just resolve those expeditiously. Sorry? What, I can't?
The invocation.
Huh?
Invocation.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Mr. Wind will deliver the invocation, please.
All righty, let us pray. Good morning, everybody. Father, we ask your blessings to be upon us today. What a beautiful day you've given us here in southwest Florida. We ask for your wisdom and insight as we discuss the items on the agenda before us. Bless our city, our mayor, City Council of people, law enforcement, and people that work for us and serve this community. Pray your hand upon all the people that are employed and we're grateful for your many blessings that you've given us. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Wind. Mr. Gambrell will please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gambrell. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Chairman Resio.
Here.
Board member Galloway.
Here.
Board member Win.
Present.
Board member Gambrell.
Here.
Board member Hershenson.
Here.
Board member Benson.
Here.
Board member Waterhouse.
We have a quorum and we can proceed. The first order of business will be the approval of the minutes of the meeting held on February 21, 2023. I guess everyone here has had a chance to review them and I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I recommend that we approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes approved, okay. Okay, with regard to public comment, what we have been doing is we will have the public comment after the presentation of the case. And since we have three today, I will suggest that we have the public comment after each case so that people here do not have to wait for the resolution of the entire three cases if they want. What I would ask the attorney to do is to swear in those who will testify one.
Good morning, everyone. All three items today are quasi-judicial in nature, which means that only sworn factual evidence or expert opinion may be properly considered by the zoning board. If you are here to speak on any of the items, whether you're the petitioner, an objector, or just an interested neighbor, even if you didn't intend to speak but just felt that you would sit in attendance and watch, you may get the urge and for simplicity's sake, what I'd like to do is swear everyone in en masse at this time. So if you could please stand, raise your right hand, and swear affirm, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Rooney. Okay, first case is the Grove Residential Plan Development. It's an amendment to a residential plan development to include 24 multifamily units as the principal use of the property and to add one deviation. We will hear first from the staff.
Good morning, zoning board. Mike Fegan with Community Development for the Record. Per usual, we'll go ahead and let the applicant go first. I'll just give you a brief introduction. Yes, as you heard, this is an amendment to an existing zoning ordinance that was approved in 2019. At that time, it was approved for a 92-bed assisted living facility. A few years have gone by since that approval. They are now back in for revision and the revision is to go from a 92-bed assisted living facility to a 24-unit multifamily project and to add one deviation. So with that, I will turn it over to the applicant to go forward with their presentation.
Applicant? Oh, there he is.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and zoning board members. I'm Wayne Arnold, a certified planner with Q grade minor and associates here representing the team. We have Rich Ivanovich, who's legal counsel on the matter, and we have Mike Della, the professional engineer from our firm. We also have Jim Banks, who's traffic engineer. I don't think we'll need his testimony. He unfortunately had to have a medical procedure this morning and may or may not be here. So we've got a few slides to talk about traffic if those are questions that you may have. So as Mr. Fegan mentioned, this was a RPD previously approved on the east side of Vanderbilt Drive just south of the New Life Church. The property is a little over four acres. It's vacant. It's been cleared and filled for many years and it's located, as I said, just east of Vanderbilt Drive in the city of Bonita Springs. Everything to the west is Collier County and the access to the site is going to be from Vanderbilt Drive. So that remains unchanged from the prior approval. As I mentioned, it's currently an RPD. The comp plan category that it's in is medium-density multifamily that allows six dwelling units per acre. The four acres times the six units per acre, we're seeking 24 multifamily condominium units on the property. This was the original approved master plan for the, what was then called coastal cottages. It was going to be your 92-bed assisted living facility that had a series of four buildings on it around a central courtyard. Access is highlighted in gray from an access easement aligning with 7th Street to the west. The new master plan we're proposing has three eight-unit residential buildings. They're two stories over one level of parking along the south side of the property there. There are some additional... See if I can use the highlighter. There are a series of detached garages, so the residents have an option to go ahead and purchase a separate garage to have in addition to their underbuilding parking that are underneath each of those three buildings. This is an artist's rendering of what those two-story-over-parking buildings look like. You can see on the upper right, that kind of gives you the concept of what is visible from the south. There's a buffer that exists with the condominiums to the south of us and then we're proposing a buffer and the one singular deviation we're asking for, because we have a drive aisle within 125 feet of residential property in Bonita, you're required to put in a wall and a buffer and that wall is supposed to be 25 feet from the property line. We have asked for the deviation to allow to be 20 feet from the property line so that we can have an additional five-foot landscape area outside of the wall. Staff has supported those deviations. We've held two of our neighborhood informational meetings. We've had a handful of attendees and I think staff would confirm that we've received no calls from neighbors and I don't believe they've seen or heard from the neighbors either. So again, as staff mentioned in the report, we've met the criteria for PD amendments. We're consistent with the comprehensive plan. The height that we're proposing is 35 feet to the eve, which is consistent with your future land use category and the prior zoning that was approved. Infrastructure's in place. The site's been filled. I don't know if you want to hear any testimony from Mike Della, who's a civil engineer. We've, you know, as time has gone by, this site is under a water management district permit today and as I said, it's been filled and cleared. So there aren't really any drainage issues per se, but the neighbors have expressed discussions that we've had with them and we have drainage system that goes out to the existing swale system on Vanderbilt Drive and then that flows north to Bonita Beach Road. So if you have any questions of me, I'm happy to answer it, but we hope that you can support staff's recommendation and approve the project.
Back up one slide, please. With your pointer, where's the wall?
The wall would be located just on the other side of this. I don't have a great image, but it would be, this pointer's not the easiest, but it's going to be right in this area.
I see, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? All right, let's hear from the staff.
Good morning again. Mike Fegan with Community Development for the Record. With the staff presentation, Mr. Arnold did a good job of summarizing the high points of this particular amendment so we can go into a little bit more detail if you'd like and you can always stop me at any time if you think you've heard enough. The staff review team, per usual, we put it through its paces with all the disciplines, planning, bike pads, surveying, engineering, environmental, traffic, and the like. Collier County was also on the review because Vanderbilt Road is a Collier County roadway, so they were also included on the review process for this application. And I believe we do all know where we are in the city right now for this project. It is on the, sort of the southwest end of the city, if you will, off of Vanderbilt Drive. This is a little bit more zoomed in. You have a church and then a little office complex to the north, residential to the south and to the east, and a mixture of both on the Collier County side to the west. And again, the request is to remove the previously approved assisted living facility use and to add multifamily dwellings and to also add one deviation, which is in relation to the wall that Mr. Arnold spoke about. Another thing that was done, skip through that, is the property development regulations are also being amended. The buildings are actually going to be set further back than what was approved previously as part of the assisted living facility. So you have an increase in setbacks for the principal structures that are being proposed in all sides of the potential project, as well as an increase in building separation. You have a slight increase in overall building height to 35 feet to the eve, but that is still in line with what the comprehensive plan allows for. So there's no incompatibility issues with that aspect of the project. So this is, as Mr. Arnold showed you before, this is a copy of the MCP that is being proposed as part of this particular project. You see the locations of the three buildings and the garages, a small clubhouse area. You can also see on there that they have a sidewalk infrastructure that connects all the buildings internally and they're also showing a sidewalk connection that goes from the site onto Vanderbilt Road that is required under the city's code, so they are meeting the multimodal requirements for that component. You do see an access point that is available off of Mango Drive. That is intended to be for emergency access only. It is not going to be a primary access or everyday access point for the project. The everyday access point is going to remain off of Vanderbilt as previously approved. These were some of the line of site exhibits that were submitted as part of the applicant's documentation to give you an idea of the size and scale of the buildings compared to the existing homes, the existing buffer area, the proposed garage. It's just sort of laying it all out there for you. And then these were the renderings that the applicant had showed you previously in their presentation that gives you an idea of what the project is going to look like from an architectural point of view compared to the surrounding property. The deviation request has to do with the requirement that we have in the city code that requires that if you have any driveways, parking areas, roads that are less than 125 feet from residential property, you have to screen those areas. It helps prevent headlight glare and things of that nature. So the code typically requires that you do either a berm or a wall berm combination and if you do that, you try to do it at least 25 feet from the property line. The deviation request is just for a five-foot change from 25 feet down to 20 feet and that's a two-pronged reason why. The first reason is because, like they said, they want to be able to landscape on both sides of the wall, which makes sense, especially if I'm living there, as opposed to staring at a blank wall. The second thing is that because they do have a drive aisle that is going down that side, you know, you have certain widths for these two-way drive aisles, plus your wall, plus your required landscaping. It just made a little bit more sense that that would have been the more appropriate placement for the wall. When it comes to environmental, there are no environmentally critical areas on site, no natural resources. The deviation that's being requested has nothing to do with the number of required plantings or the required buffer widths overall. It just has to do with the placement of a wall that is used for buffering, so there are no incompatibility issues that we saw with the environmental side of things. When it comes to stormwater, when you read through the neighborhood information meeting minutes that were provided in your packet, that was something that did pop up several times. That seemed to be a point of concern for the surrounding residents, which makes sense, given what we go through, what seems to be on a regular basis now. So the way the stormwater system is set up there is this project in the church property to the north, everything flows west into the right-of-way of Vanderbilt Drive and then north towards Bonita Beach Road. This project is not intending to change the drainage pattern in any way, shape, or form. One thing they can do and one thing that was discussed at the neighborhood meeting is the possibility of adding additional height to the berm that's in the Vanderbilt right-of-way to prevent water from flowing south towards the additional residential property and making sure it continues to go north. That property line, and I'll see if I can pull up an aerial that kind of describes that a little bit better. So sort of like the line of demarcation for the stormwater system is right about here. So everything that's above my pointer flows to Beach Road. Everything that is below my pointer flows south down Vanderbilt, so they're right there on the cusp. So the goal is to obviously make sure that they're not going to be doing anything that influences or negatively impacts the existing flows of where the water is supposed to go and they are not intending on influencing those tracks negatively. And they'll have to provide additional calculations at time of local development or when they actually apply for their engineering permits, if it were to be approved by this board and by council, they would have to provide additional stormwater calculations for consideration and we can't approve a project that has negative impacts on surrounding properties. When it comes to traffic, it's not really a project of significance. It's not really a big traffic generator. You know, when you look at the Vanderbilt segment that's in the traffic impact statement that was provided to you and reviewed by staff and by Collier County, it accounts for about 1.73% of the trips associated with that roadway segment. In Bonita Springs, if you're less than 2%, you're considered not a project of significant impact. That's actually a more stringent standard than you have nationwide. If you look at the actual traffic manuals, it's a 5% standard. So we're a bit more restrictive with what we consider to be projects that could have a significant impact on traffic and even by that increased standard, they're still not over that threshold. So 24 units on a property this size on the roadways that are intending to serve the property, not a huge deal from a traffic standpoint. In addition to just vehicular traffic, you know, they are going to be providing the required sidewalks and bike racks and that infrastructure that is also required by the city code. So they are meeting all of the transportation element requirements that we have in the code for a project like this. And sort of tying that into the comprehensive plan review, as Wayne had described in his presentation and it's also found in your staff report, the future land use is medium-density multifamily residential. So it sort of calls for multifamily development as one of the allowable uses in that comprehensive plan land use category. They are proposing a multifamily development, so there's no inconsistency there. It does allow density at six units per acre. They have a site that's a little bit over four acres. Six times four gives you 24. That's the number of units they're requesting, so they are not exceeding their density allowances in that regard. The transportation element, we just discussed, you have the existing roadways, the proposed access point that's going to line up with 7th Street on the Collier County side, the multimodal uses that are being provided, sidewalks, bike racks, and the like. And the housing element, you know, the housing element in the comprehensive plan sort of takes you in a few different directions. It tends to be a bit heavy on affordable housing overall. This is not an affordable housing project per se. Approving this project does not remove the ability for a future developer to come back and potentially look at doing an affordable housing project of some kind on this property. So we don't see a conflict in that regard. And the remaining elements that are in the comprehensive plan with regards to capital improvements and conservation and coastal management don't particularly apply to this property. So with that, we are recommending approval of the amendment to remove the assisted living facility use and add the 24 multifamily units in its place as the primary use. We do have some conditions of approval. The project should be generally consistent with the master concept plan that is shown in your packet. The revised schedule of uses, which deletes the assisted living facility, community gardens, food and beverage service, staff guest quarters, and adds the multifamily dwellings. The revised property development regulations that we showed you that had the increased setbacks for this particular project compared to the others. And then the remaining conditions of ordinance 1903 to be in full force and effect. It's a relatively minor amendment and many of the conditions that were in the previous ordinance still hold true today and still hold some weight, so it didn't make sense to reinvent the wheel from that standpoint. So essentially, it's these four conditions on top of what was already approved in ordinance 1903 is what the staff recommendation is. And if you have any questions or comments for me or the applicant, we're here for you.
I have a question, Mike.
Sure.
On, relative to the stormwater, which I guess I'm a little bit close to in my, because I have my own neighborhood, where it states in the application, quote, "possibly increase the berm height." What's it going to take to make that a mandate? Because I can't see any negative side to it and I like the idea of the vegetative buffer. That's really excellent in my mind, because you're not looking at an ugly wall. But the stormwater management, if the public members had suggested that, to the purpose of having these public meetings, can that be done? Can that be, or is that something that requires? In other words, if I were to say, could we make this, I'm asking, could we make that a mandate as part of the project or is that come later? That's what I'm trying to find out.
I'm going to let the applicant step in and answer that particular one, since that was their language. It has to do with the flow rate and the calculations that are provided at time of development order for the actual flow of water runoff, how much that area is going to be holding over what period of time to determine whether or not there's an adequate holding area for that amount of water before it eventually goes to where it needs to go. But since that was the applicant's proposed language, I can let them speak a little bit more to that.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Mike Della, engineer with Grady Minor. Yes, at the neighborhood meeting, we did propose, like we had with the previous project, of adding six inches to the perimeter berm along the south and east sides of the project. That way, when the water stage is up in a big, big event, the only way it could go is back out to the west, the Vanderbilt Drive drainage swale. So we did propose that. The neighborhood seemed amenable to that being done. So it's about six inches. It's enough to direct the water the other way.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
One general question.
Yes, sir.
Why did you ban community gardens?
Oh, well, if you want us to, why you wanted to remove that?
Sure.
Probably because of the area that you needed.
Sure. Again, for the record, it's Wayne Arnold. Well, the concept is different. The community gardens that they were going to have for the assisted living facility were the interior courtyard where they were going to focus and have gardens for the elderly residents to tend to and be a part of the community. Just a traditional condominium complex coming forward. We didn't think a community garden was really acceptable, even though we're still having a courtyard that will be inside of the community. It's not going to focus on the garden aspect of it.
So saying the new residents, even if they want a garden, can't have it?
They can. I think it's, could we use it? Could we keep it as an accessory use? We certainly could if that is to your pleasure. I have no objection to doing that.
Anything else? Okay, I would like to entertain a motion. Public comment. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Public comment. Okay, there is none.
I can make a motion.
You make a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion for the application submitted by SRG Vanderbilt LLC relative to amending a residential plan development, RPD, to include 24 multifamily units as a principal use of the property and to add one deviation. And that is case number PD 22-94289-BOS.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
All unanimously carried.
Who was the second?
Oh, second.
Yep, second.
Okay, now, I would like to make a proposal to change the agenda because it seems to me that the Tommy's Express Car Wash special exemption will generate more public comment than will the car condominium council. So if there is no objection, I would like to have the applicant for the car condominium special exemption to make their presentation at this point. I just want to get this out of the way.
Just waiting for the PowerPoint to be...
Well, I don't know.
Did I mess up everything?
No, we'll get there.
Certain privileges you have.
That's exactly.
Pick the right one?
That's there.
There we go.
Okay.
You can do the arrows.
And that's the highlighter?
Perfect, okay, thank you. Okay, we're all set. Thank you. And thanks for revising the agenda. That works in my favor, I think, in terms of timing.
Makes sense.
Bob Mulhair for the record from Home Montez. Let me advance that. With me here this morning is the applicant, Tom Taylor, with Livingston Professional Center LLC. And Terry Cole, sitting right here, is the civil engineer, also works with me at Home Montez. And Jeremy Chastain is a certified planner who also works with me. I've appeared before you several times in the past, but it's been a while, so nice to be back. Thank you. This is the subject location. That's a wider view or perspective, as you can see, Bonita Beach Road and of course, the Greyhound, the former Greyhound track property right there to the west. This is a little closer view, which provides the surrounding land uses for you. I'm going to turn around for a moment. As I said, the poker room is immediately to the west. Race Track Gas Station is to the north. And the Oak Creek Charter School is to the east. I don't have to turn around if I just use what's in front of me here. This is the future land use map. The property, as well as all of the surrounding properties, is designated general commercial. And this is the zoning on the site. And again, the zoning on the site is C1A, which is on the east and south. And to the north is a CPD and across Race Track Road is also a CPD. That's the poker room, former Greyhound track. So the property is entirely surrounded by commercial zoning. The C1A zoning district permits a number of uses, including restaurants, supermarkets, places of worship. The reason we listed those is those are significantly higher traffic generators than the use that we're requesting. So we're requesting a special exception to allow a mini warehouse, which is the use that the car condo use falls under, self-storage type use is the most similar. It's totally indoor. And a special exception, as I'm sure you're aware, are uses that are permitted within the zoning district but require additional review to ensure that there's compatibility with the surrounding area. This project will consist of 31 indoor units. The building will be 49,130 square feet and 20 feet high, so it's a low-profile building. These units will be primarily used to store vehicles. Presumably, if they're purchasing one of these car condos, those will be high-end vehicles. This is the site plan. I realize that's a little bit difficult to see, but let's see. You can see that the axis will be over here on furlong, and then the exit will be over here on, I'm sorry, that's, over here is, it's been hard for me to see, Performance Lane, and then this is furlong. So the traffic will be one-way. These are some actual photographs of the buildings that my client has already constructed, which are, this one's the Naples Boulevard location. If you're familiar with the Costco in Naples, it's immediately adjacent to the Infinity dealership and across the street from where the Costco is located. The reason we included these is, you can see, they're very attractive buildings. They're nicely landscaped. They fit very well within that area. This is another perspective. And this is the one on Livingston. As I said, you can see they're nicely landscaped, very low-profile. They look more like an office building. We did have two public meetings, which are required. They were both held at Saint Leo's Catholic Church, and no members of the public attended either of those meetings. We do have a number of staff conditions of approval, which we are in agreement with. We appreciate the thorough review by staff. I'm just going to get to those in a moment. We have a maximum number of thirty-one, which I indicated. There are some use restrictions. We have no problem. Those use restrictions are consistent with the way that these operate. And by the way, if there are any questions on operational matters, Tom Taylor is here and can answer There's some standard stipulations about additional changes. We have to perfect the drainage adjustment, which is no problem. We understand that, and we agree to that as part of the local development order review process. And we have to provide an alternative betterment plan. We've already developed that landscape plan. Again, no problem there. We can certainly accept that condition. The traffic impacts from this type of use are very low. The actual traffic generation for this type of use, PM peak hour, is a total of ten trips, so four entering, six exiting. That's a good thing, because there is a significant amount of traffic at certain times of the day utilizing or accessing the charter school buses and pickup and drop-off. So this really is a good use. It's very attractive. It's a very low-traffic generator. There's no noise or odors. Everything's inside. And we do have one deviation, which was to be able to allow or utilize rollout solid waste containers, which was reviewed by staff and recommended for approval. I understand, and Mary can speak to this, I think, when she comes up, that they have asked us to defer that deviation or decision on that deviation until development order, but we know that staff doesn't object to that. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Terry Cole is here to answer any questions you may have relative to the civil engineering, and Tom Taylor to the operational aspects.
May I ask, do you anticipate cars being removed on a daily basis?
No. No. They store them. It's an occasional, you know, go and take the car out, you know, for show off a little.
Sunday afternoon with the Maserati.
Yes, yes, yes.
The spaces are going to be purchased, or will they be available for lease?
That's, thank you for asking. They will be purchased. This is condominiumized and purchased.
All will be purchased.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to be funny. A person comes and takes his Hyundai on a Sunday afternoon and wants to get his Lamborghini. Is a place to park his Hyundai and take his Lamborghini out? There'll be spots for him to do that?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I had. Anybody else?
Is it just going to be automobiles that'll be stored here? No boats or other things?
Occasionally, there may be a boat stored. But again, it's indoor, so.
Right. And possibly with boats, that people may have, no fueling?
No. No repairs, no fueling, none of those kind of more, less desirable activities.
And the building's got full fire protection?
Yes.
One other question. Is there a way to vent the exhaust if a person wants to start his car or test the engine or something?
Yeah, those are, those are kind of typical requirements. The buildings are designed to meet fire. Yes.
Fans.
Yes.
Tony, you ask a good question. I don't see parking on here.
In front of the, in front of the units.
Okay. Well, Mr. Gambrell, will it address my question of the fellow coming with the one car to take his fancy car out?
Well, he could pull out his fancy car and pull the other one in, go on his merry way, come back and do the same thing. There's room. That's a wide, yes, that's a wide drive, yes. Fifty feet.
He's got to do it in the driveway.
Yeah.
The car he drove in with's got to sit in the driveway for a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's not a lot of traffic.
That's, to me, that's more of an inconvenience for a person. It may be a reason to think twice about renting a garage, you know what I mean? But that's, that's okay. Anything else?
I just have one question.
Sure.
On an average day, say, during heavy tourist season, it may be included in there, but I don't recall seeing it.
Yes.
What would be the maximum, based upon other similar places, condo, auto condo locations?
Yeah.
What would be the average number of trips, say, in a really heavy part of the season?
So, looking at AM peak hour, which I believe is six to eight, could be seven to nine, that is a, three trips in, three trips out, for a total of six. And the PM is four trips in, and that's probably four to six PM, four trips in, six trips out. So it's a very low-traffic generator.
Thank you.
Thank you for that complete presentation.
Thank you.
Do you anticipate EV charging stations in the building?
EV?
Probably have those.
Yes, we expect to have those. Thank you.
Staff?
Good morning. Mary Zizo for the record. I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. I'll keep this brief, but to clarify a couple points made by the applicant. Sorry, I didn't give you time.
Just tell me which one I need.
It should say staff presentation.
Oh, sorry.
By the top right one. Very top right.
Top?
Yes.
Top.
Perfect, thank you. So we are familiar with where the location is. The way our code is written, we've historically defined these car condominium uses as a mini warehouse, what we know as self-storage facilities. So within the commercial zone, which is where this property is located, of the Benita Beach Road corridor overlay, that does require a special exception, hence why we are here today. The difference, obviously, is that it's not a traditional self-storage facility. As they said, they'd like to condomize these, and it's a much smaller scale, thirty-one units maximum, is what we are recommending. On the site plan, I do want to mention that we do have a conflict between the landscape code and our zoning code, but the applicant has worked very diligently with us to make sure that their site plan does meet the intent of both codes and have worked with our recommendation. So you'll see that there's a maximum setback along Race Track Road, and that they do comply with a thirty-foot landscape buffer that's required for self-storage facilities on the other sides. Additionally, they will be adding in six-foot sidewalks on all sides, as required with our code. And that sidewalk along Race Track Road will be within the Race Track Road right-of-way. There is a common element between the property and the Race Track Road right-of-way, which is a little bit different in this case. A sample floor plan, as they said, twenty feet maximum is what they're looking to have. These units will have a restroom. But, and back, going back to your parking question, there is a minimum required number of parking spaces. They do satisfy that, so there are parking spaces for guests as well. But as they mentioned, those units are not small, so they are able to fit the additional cars in there as well.
You say every unit has a bathroom?
And their sample floor plan, it does. That would probably be the case, yes. And then, in addition, for traffic purposes, the applicant has worked with us to have a one-way-in, one-way-out entrance in accordance with what we were requesting to better accommodate the school that is there as well, as we know that that has its own traffic pattern. As I said, the zoning is consistent. It's a commercial use, and the future land use is consistent as well. It's within the general commercial, future land use category. I've already addressed traffic. It's a very small significance of a project, and that leads into my analysis of the special exception, as this property is located near high-traffic generating uses. Therefore, it is appropriate that we have this changed circumstance where they're looking for a very low-traffic generator. So we do find that appropriate there. The applicant has given their testimony, and staff does recommend approval. The public did not attend any of their neighborhood meetings. After the meetings, they do send out notices to all of the neighbors. They did receive three opposition letters, but as I laid out in my staff report, I followed up with those residents, and many of them did not understand the request, and they were worried about traffic generation on Benita Beach Road. So once I clarified a little bit further, they were more comfortable with the request. And then the conditions of approval were already pointed out. Many of that will be handled at time of development order, but essentially, they are to require with all of the codes that we have in place. And then, yes, there'll be no living in those units. They are not dwelling units. They are solely used for the storage, and then they can come and spend some time at the unit if they'd like, but they are not permitted to live there. And there will be no service on-site of any of those cars, or if they store boats. And again, none of that can be sitting outside of the unit. So if they do have a boat, it can't be, you know, waiting for the next three days when you're going to take it out. It needs to be within the unit. There's no outdoor display or storage. Any questions at this time?
I don't have any objection to this project, just a general planning question. I noticed in the paper this morning that Cape Coral is planning a moratorium on these kinds of uses.
Okay.
And I wonder if the town of Benita Springs is keeping track of the number of these self-storage kind of uses in the city, because they're not exactly hives of pedestrian activity. Okay, so we're trying to create something walkable. We need walkers. So just a general question.
That was addressed within our Benita Beach Road corridor overlay. We used to have a moratorium along Benita Beach Road, and they did the visioning study, and so the new code does reflect those uses, car washes, self-storage facilities. While the use does not necessarily generate pedestrian traffic, we do want to make sure that the use can accommodate pedestrian traffic that passes by it. So it's more so about the design standards around that building.
Keep track of the number of these things?
Not on a daily basis, but quite often, we get requests, how many self-storage facilities are looking to come. And so, yes, we do track it that way.
Thanks.
Just one last obvious question. These are one-car garages, right? I mean, one-car condominiums, right?
They haven't pinpointed that directly yet, I would say. Some units are bigger than others.
Some are bigger. Okay, that's just, this is a question.
Correct.
One last question. I think there's a typo. In your findings and conclusions...
Yes, thank you. This is not a fast-food restaurant.
That's what I get for reading it.
Sorry, I forgot to correct that earlier. Yes, there is no fast food. This is not a drive-thru.
Look, I just want to take this opportunity to commend.
Thank you for that.
To commend the staff for a wonderful, wonderful analysis, where you lay out all of the requirements for special exemption, and you addressed them.
Thank you.
That is a wonderful thing, and I wish we would continue to do that on an ongoing basis.
We will take that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Public comments? Okay, well, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the, especially to approve the case number SPE twenty-two dash nine-two-nine-three-six-dashBOS with the conditions as imposed by the staff.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Okay. I guess we can just...
You want a break now, or?
You know what? No, I think we've kept these, yeah, I think, I think we're going to get ready to go. We kept these people long enough. Thank you very much for your forbearance. The next item we will take up is Tommy's Express Car Wash, Benita Beach Road special exemption, a special exception request to allow a car wash facility on property located within the commercial zone of the Benita Beach Road corridor overlay pursuant to Land Development Code, Section four dash eight-nine-eight. May we hear from Mr. Fegan first?
Hello again. Mike Fegan with Community Development for the Record. It's been fifteen minutes since I've spoken to you, so good to be back up here. Per usual, the applicant's going to go first. I'll just go ahead and set the scene. As you heard before, this is a property that is located within the Benita Beach Road corridor overlay. It is also within the general commercial, future land use category, which does promote commercial uses along the corridor. The request is for a car wash, which is a permitted use by special exception. The applicant has filed the necessary paperwork and has held the required public information meetings on the project. The plan that you see before you is probably the fifth or sixth iteration of that site plan. This was not their initial proposal. There was a lot of going back and forth with staff on this particular proposal, understanding the nearby residential uses and the sensitivity to those uses. So we think we got it in a pretty good place at this point, but I'm going to go ahead and let the applicant go first, per usual, and present their case.
Thank you, Mike. Good morning again. Wayne Arnold with Grady Minor and Associates. And with us today, we have John Caruso, who's with the Tommy's Car Wash. We have Michael Herrera, one of our professional engineers from Grady Minor, and Jim Banks, traffic engineer, was able to make it. Jim was not sworn in, so if he has to give testimony, Derek, maybe we could swear him in at that time.
We'll do a little, if he comes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So the property that we're talking about today is about a two-acre site. It's located on the northwest corner of Lime Street and Benita Beach Road. As Mr. Fegan indicated, this is in the Benita Beach Road corridor. It's one of the commercial designated sites. It is currently zoned commercial today, but under your Benita Beach Road corridor regulations, a car wash is a special exception, which you just heard a special exception. So it's a use that's not permitted, except with conditions, and staff has offered conditions related to this one as well. And I'm going to go through a short presentation and answer some questions that you may have, and we'll go from there. So as I mentioned, the site's just under two acres, designated general commercial under your comp plan and zoned commercial today, which the C one A and the CS one zoning districts allow a variety of retail and office. And then your overlay also has a wide list of uses that are permitted, either by right or by special exception. So this is how your code cites it. You can see, it says SE, special exception required for a car wash under your corridor regulations. Sorry about that. We have site design standards that are subject right out of the Benita Beach Road corridor. There are no exceptions. There are no deviations or variances associated with the request. They're all standard by code, and we're meeting all those code conditions. There are special height limitations that are applicable here that allow up to fifty-five foot tall buildings. We're asking for a single-bay car wash, so it's far less than the fifty-five feet that uses could be in this corridor. Here's a site plan that, as Mike mentioned, this has evolved significantly from the time we submitted the application. And I'll just try to walk you through. So obviously, Benita Beach Road is the bottom of the page. Lime Street is here. Lime Street is technically not a through street. It does not extend all the way to Dean Street. There was a dead end created at some point in time. There are a couple of cross streets that do go out to Imperial Parkway. But the site access has been located here on Lime Street. Staff and others probably would have liked that to be a little farther to the north, but this allows... allows us to keep it south of the nearby residential property up here, and it allowed us to go ahead and extend a solid wall all the way across the back of the property in order to have an additional barrier between us and nearby residences. So, if you're using this facility, you're going to come in off of Lime Street, and one of the big changes was the stacking distance on the site grew considerably, so you would extend all the way to here, come into the site, circulate into the tunnel, get your car washed, gets blow, blow as it comes out, then you move into this area, which are the vacuum, and then you would go ahead and exit the site back onto Lime Street and to Benita Beach Road. So, the tunnel itself, I've got another aerial, this is a color version of the site plan, it's just a little easier to read than looking at it on the black and white, but again, you know, walking you through the site plan, you come into the site, you stack internally here, pay machines are here, you come into the tunnel, the car gets washed, the blowers blow it dry as it comes out, you exit into the vacuum area if you're going to go ahead and vacuum your cars, and then you would exit the site here. So, other highlights of the site are significant buffering required under your Benita Beach Road Corridor, a lot of, a wide buffer with a lot of vegetation and an undulating berm, and then to the north, as I mentioned, we have an eight-foot-high wall that extends all along the pavement area for the entirety of the site, and that allows us to segregate from the residences, and this would all be either floodplain compensation, water management areas, and then retention of a couple of the heritage trees that are on the site, and then we can then, in addition, add the landscape buffer to the far north end of the site, giving some better visual separation from the residences as well as the buffer. So, we have the vegetative buffer, we have an area of water management, and then we have the wall, so we've got three levels before you get to the nearest residences to the north. And the significant change on this plan that I would point out, that when we originally worked on this, the vacuums were going to be in this area adjacent to the wall, and working with staff, because they were more concerned, not because of the noise, because we had a noise study completed, but just because of site circulation, they wanted a greater amount of stacking for the vehicles, so what occurred out of that was to relocate all of the vacuums down here right at the intersection, so the highest generating background noise of Benita Beach Road is adjacent to the vacuum, so we believe that was a significant change that benefited, obviously, neighbors in the long run, if they were concerned about noise. Here were some images that we had created on some building elevations, showing you images from Benita Beach Road. So, this doesn't highlight the vegetation, but there obviously is a large landscape buffer that I indicated on the site plan. We have a traffic impact statement that was created, but I think what I'd like to do, before I have Jim Banks come up and talk traffic, I'd like to go back to the site plan, if I could, and just have Michael Herrera come and talk to you about drainage, it seems to be an issue for everybody in Benita, and I'd just like for him to describe what we're intending to do in that floodplain compensation and water management area.
Good morning, Michael Herrera, civil engineer with Grady Minor. So, the property is located in a flood zone, it's less than two acres, and we will be submitting a ten-two self-certification, we qualify for that through the state, but basically, we're required to meet the guidelines and criteria that's established in the South Flora Water Management District. So, in those areas, we will have some floodplain compensation, and we will not have any adverse negative impacts to the floodplain, and then also onsite, we're required to provide water quality, the required water quality and attenuation, so we'll be modeling different storm events to make sure that we don't discharge at a greater post-development rate than it's allowed, and then also, we meet the water quality standards in terms of nutrient loading, nitrogen and phosphorus, but everything is gonna be handled onsite, and we're required to submit a ten-two self-certification through the state.
Thank you, Michael. So, I think it'd probably be appropriate to have Jim Banks come forward and just give you a brief summary of the traffic impact statement that he had prepared.
I'm gonna go ahead and swear you in, Mr. Banks, if there's anyone else who came in a little late and didn't have an opportunity to be sworn in, please rise, and I'll swear you in now as well. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, I do.
Thank you.
Good morning, for the record, my name is Jim Banks, my firm prepared the traffic impact study for Tommy's Car Wash, the traffic study was prepared pursuant to the criteria set forth by City of Benita Springs, your staff reviewed that report and agreed with its findings, which are that Tommy's Car Wash will not significantly or negatively impact the surrounding road network, and there is adequate capacity on the adjacent road network to accommodate the traffic that will be generated. I wanna go back and touch upon where I said that the project does not significantly impact, your staff had mentioned to you earlier about the two percent impact rule that the city has adopted, we are well below that two percent standard, in fact, we're, we impact the adjacent road network at less than one percent, which is defined as a de minimis impact on the adjacent road network. It's also, it should be noted, and I think this is an important point, that this property is already zoned for commercial land uses, and those commercial land uses, if they were developed on this site, would generate substantially more traffic than what is being, what would be generated by the Tommy's Car Wash, and what I mean by that is, the site could be developed with a retail land use that would generate more traffic than a Tommy's Car Wash, the site could be developed with medical land use that would generate more traffic than a Tommy's, it could be developed with a restaurant use that would generate more traffic than Tommy's, and it could also be, there are certain business offices that could be developed on this site that also would generate more traffic than Tommy's. So, this, this project will actually generate less trips than what other land uses would if it was developed on this site, and those uses would not have to go through this special exception process, they could, they could've went straight in for a DOO application and been approved. As determined, the Tommy's Car Wash during the highest PM peak hour of the day will generate seventy-eight PM peak hour trips, that's two ways, that's thirty-nine vehicles entering the site, and thirty-nine vehicles exiting the site. We did obtain traffic counts on Lime Street, your staff had asked us to do that because they thought it would be important information to present to the planning commission as well as the city councils, so we did obtain traffic counts on Lime Street over three days, and we took that information and determined what the highest peak hour trip rate was on Lime Street, what's there today, and we found that there were sixty-eight PM peak hour one-way trips on Lime Street today. We mentioned earlier that this site would generate thirty-nine PM peak hour one-way trips, and so, after Tommy's is built and up and operating, the total demand on Lime Street will be a hundred and seven one-way PM peak hour trips, which represents eighteen percent of Lime Street's available capacity, so there is still a substantial surplus of capacity that will remain on Lime Street. Do wanna go back to that one exhibit. That one right there. The location of this site is fronts Benita Beach Road, and so, it is our expectation that most, if not all, of our traffic that would be generated by Tommy's will enter and exit the site off of Benita Beach Road, and then use Lime Street to access the driveway. We anticipate all the traffic will enter off Benita Beach Road, and then turn left into the site from Lime Street, and then exit out onto Lime Street, and then exit out on Benita Beach Road. That concludes my testimony, if you have any questions, I'm...
There's going to be a filter lane if you're heading east on Benita Beach Road to turn into the Lime Street?
Would there be a right turn lane?
You know...
A right turn lane?
A left turn, isn't it? If you're going east.
Oh, today, there is, yes, there's a left turn lane from...
There is a left turn lane.
Yes, from Benita Beach Road to turn left onto Lime Street, so that's a good point, I'm glad you mentioned that, that Lime Street and Benita Beach Road is a full access, and today, there is a left ingress turn lane on Benita Beach Road to access Lime Street.
And coming out of Lime Street, I can currently turn left onto Benita Beach?
You can turn left, or you can turn right out onto Benita Beach Road.
Traffic permitting.
Traffic permitting.
Any other traffic questions? I have some other questions. Can you explain what happens after, I mean, this, the driver stays in his car, maybe this is not for you, maybe this is for the applicant, the driver stays in his car, goes through the tunnel, comes out, and then if he wishes, he can just take off, there will not be people outside drying the car with towels or anything like that?
I'll have, I'll have to ask somebody else.
Yeah, please, that's, that was my point.
Let me go back to the site plan, so what happens on a single-tunnel car wash, some of you may have used them, you pull into the site, you would pay an attendant at this location, you stay in your vehicle, it circulates through the tunnel, there's a blower system that blows the car dry, then you can come out if you choose to have a complimentary vacuum of your vehicle, you can do so here, you do that on your own, there are some stands if you need to throw items away, but it's not a substantial place where people will be congregating beyond getting their car vacuumed and then exiting the site.
Other question, why do we need seventeen vacuums?
John, I don't know the answer to the number, I don't know if you can testify to why we have that number of vacuums, but it's based on the number of vehicles, like you indicated.
You would seem that cars might be backed up and cause troubles in narrow areas?
Well, what it does allow, it allows for somebody to find a vacuum spot, so they don't have to stage and wait, so it can keep the vehicles moving through the car wash, so it makes sense to have more vacuums than the capacity of just getting the automobiles through the site.
We'd like to have twenty.
You should come introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm John Caruso, I'm a representative for Tommy's Car Wash, you know, we like to have about twenty, but for this project, we were only able to fit in seventeen, but I can tell you that the biggest comment that we get from customers is that there's not enough vacuums, and if you ever go to any of the other car washes that offer vacuums, you'll notice that they're full, and it gives people a place to pull in and be isolated and individual, they can clean their cars, vacuum, they can do their windshield, and it's sort of a personal safe place to be, and that's why on this site, you'll notice we have two ways of exiting, this site is very free and loose for us, you can, you can exit with a right turn to the right, and you can also go out the other way, and if you choose not to enter the vacuum area, you can exit without having to get in the middle of all that.
You anticipate anybody coming in simply to vacuum the car?
No.
You would hope that?
People are pretty good about it, they're pretty good.
Last other question I have, hours of operation, do you need to be open at nine PM?
Usually it tails off, the time from eight to nine is, usually we're cleaning up and closing down.
But you still run the car wash?
Yeah, but it's...
You still run the blowers?
The blowers, you know, they shut, they shut off, they only come on when a car triggers them, so if there's nothing coming, you know, they're not on. But we, you know, we have traffic at eight-thirty, you know, we do still have a lot of traffic at eight-thirty, and so we use nine o'clock.
Is this similar to the one down the street where Home Depot, I'm getting a visual, and there are car wash down there that's similar to that?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you know, I'm talking about visually, they pull in, I've used that, you pull in, you know, you got the blowers, it's contained, and then you exit out, and the vacuums are just very conveniently, I mean, I'm just trying to get a visual of what you're trying to do.
This is a real good visual that Wayne's put together, and Grady Minor's done a really good job site planning on this project, this site is littered with obstacles, there's utility easements running through the middle of it that we've been working on for over a year to get them put away, and we have done so, this site is very, very much blighted, if you will, so I think we've done a really good job, and there are no variance requests on this parcel at all, and there's a ton of, being in the overlay district, as you know, there's a ton of restrictions that we've been able to overcome, and that's because we're not really trying to push the envelope here, we've got a lot of room, and all the room that we have, we've given to the neighbors for buffer, and for stormwater management, and containment.
And wastewater management, you've studied that, wastewater management, you say twenty percent of your water will be recycled, and eighty percent would go into the sewers?
That's correct.
And that's, okay, that somebody has studied that, and it doesn't seem to be overwhelming in any way, just normal?
Yeah.
If I might, yes, the Benita Springs Utilities has been involved in the review, and we'll be going through a development order review, assuming we can get approval, and there's no capacity issues with your sewer system in Benita, and the fact we're recycling twenty percent, plus or minus, is probably a good thing for all of us.
And you use just plain, simple soap and water, and nothing harsh chemicals or anything like that that would blow...
No, sir, no chemicals that aren't acceptable to be discharged into the wastewater system.
Okay.
Got some, one.
Please?
Owner's rep, come back, please. So far, I've heard one attendant, how many attendants to run the place?
Great question, we have six people on staff at all times when we're open, always a manager and an assistant manager.
Where do they park?
They park over up near the employee parking.
If I get the pointer, please.
So, the employee parking is located in this vicinity?
We can get six cars in there?
Well, we, not all of our employees, you know, drive to, not all of them drive, some of them take the bus, some of them get dropped off by their parents, you know.
And it's six, you'll have six employees there at eight-thirty at night, are you tailing off by then?
Yeah, they're there all the time, they're loading up for the soap and all the containers for the next day, and getting ready. Another thing that we do is, once an hour, one of our employees goes around the property and makes sure that all the wrappers that get blown around and gets cleaned up, so we surveillance on our property for anything, but we're always checking it, but once an hour, we keep track of it.
I noticed you have dumpsters to the left side, a person goes through the car wash, and then he comes out to the back, and he wants to empty his trunk, he's got some junk in the trunk, will there be bins near the vacs where they could throw that, or?
Yeah, there's gates, it's protected, that's a great question, you know, our deliveries are once a week for soap and chemicals, and they come in a van, and the refuse is dumped once a week, so that's the...
I understand, I'm talking about refuse from an individual customer.
Yes, so the customers, so, yes, while the, while a customer is using the vacuum area, there are trash bins that are located here, those bins ultimately get discharged, whoops, I'm so sorry, I don't have that, those ultimately get discharged into the dumpster that's here, that gets picked up by solid waste.
Wait a minute.
Where the vacuum cleaners are, there's, there's trash...
Is there gonna be a bin where the vacuum cleaners are?
There's trash receptacles.
Yes, there are several trash receptacles where people can put things out of their car.
There is, there is, right, okay, just to clarify, there will be bins where people can put refuse, personal refuse, coffee cups, whatever?
Yes, sir.
Near the vacuum area?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Fegan?
I've just got a few other concluding remarks, if I could, so, and it's redundant of what's in your staff report, but I just felt like I needed to at least touch on these briefly. So, your, the Land Development Code has a number of criteria for special exceptions, and A through J, so are there changing conditions, and I think staff rightly pointed out that the property is zoned commercial, but it's now in your overlay, and that overlay has changed the permitted uses and those uses that are special exceptions, so this is the process that we're required to go through. I prepared some testimony and consistency findings, compatibility findings that are part of your record, the recommendation of staff, staff has recommended approval with conditions of the project after their review, testimony to the public you haven't heard yet, but we've held our two informational meetings, we tried to address issues that were raised by the neighbors, of course, you know, as you had read in your staff report, and the neighborhood meeting minutes, noise, traffic, water management, we think we've touched on all those by having the professional noise expert prepare the study, also by relocating the site plan as we work with staff. We've met all the criteria in the Land Development Code, as we've mentioned, there's no variances or deviations that are a part of the proposal, there are no truly environmentally critical lands on the site, but we do have a couple of heritage trees that we're preserving, and then the floodplain compensation is something that's going to address some...
And then the floodplain compensation is something that's going to address some of the water management issues on the site. And that's... You heard Mr. Herrera testify that we'll be going through the permitting process for that. Are we compatible? In my professional opinion, we are compatible with the neighbors because of the site plan changes we've made and the way we've relocated those vacuums that I think were the source of noise concerns that the residents had. You heard Mr. Banks talk about all the capacity on Lime Street. Again, it's not a through street, and they've asked us who might be driving up Lime Street past your entrance into our neighborhood. And my response was always, probably one of your neighbors that might be utilizing the site, because otherwise, there's no need for one of the customers to want to traverse Lime Street to then find another route out to Imperial Parkway, because Benita Beach Road is right there. So we don't believe that this causes any type of nuisance for the community. We believe that the site plan has addressed all those, as well as the conditions by staff. And we know that it's in compliance with the zoning provisions in your comp plan because we've asked for no deviations. So we agree with staff and their recommendations. Hope you can too. We're here to answer any additional questions that may come up from the public. And with that, I'll yield to Mr. Fegan.
Mr. Fegan?
Good morning again. Mike Fegan for the record with Community Development. Go ahead and pull up the staff presentation. All righty then. So, as usual, we start with the staff review team. And as always, with all of our applications, we put them through our paces with all the disciplines, being able to weigh in on these initial zoning applications. This one was no different. Obviously, traffic was a big one, engineering, environmental. The city architect took a peek at it. Lee County DOT also looked at it, since Benita Beach Road is a city maintained... I'm sorry, is a county maintained roadway. So again, we have this request to allow this commercial use here within the commercial zone of the Benita Beach Road corridor overlay. Building's approximately forty-six hundred square feet. You saw the seventeen vacuum stalls that were also on the site plan. And this use is permitted with special exception approval to be able to add conditions to these types of uses. So that's why we are here. And of course, I think we all know where the site is by now. It's actually two parcels right now. They have to go through a lock combination, remove some easements that you heard about previously to get the site more in line with what they need to do to be able to develop. So we're still relatively in the early stages of this particular project. This is just one step. Few key things here, obviously, is the eight-foot-high solid wall that's gonna surround the property on the northern side of the project boundary, but not the property boundary. The actual property boundary is all the way up here, is the edge of the actual property. They're gonna put the wall inward to really just surround the area of impact that they're gonna be using for the site. And it is gonna be an eight-foot-high solid wall. Staff did add a condition that in addition to the wall and in addition to all the landscaping that you saw in the applicant's plan on both sides of the wall and the buffering that's up on the north end, that they also include soundproofing on the wall. That was something that staff was pretty gung-ho on getting, and it was definitely gonna influence staff's decision of whether or not this project would receive a recommendation of approval. Yes, they did have a noise study that addressed the noise, but in an effort to be extra cautious and sensitive to the residential uses, we also wanted additional soundproofing measures taken on that wall. You also have the car wash building itself, which is about a hundred and fifty feet from the nearest residential property. It's pushed really more towards Benita Beach Road. It's about twenty-five feet away from the road right-of-way of Benita Beach Road, which is the maximum setback allowed for property being redeveloped within the Benita Beach Road corridor overlay. And then you also have a slight revision to the access point. They have a current driveway that's just below. It's right about there, and it lines up with the office complex next door. So one of the questions that staff asked was, you know, why aren't you gonna be using that particular access point that's already there for you? And they actually had a pretty good response, and we ran it by our traffic engineer, and he agreed as well. And the response was, well, when you're coming off of Benita Beach Road heading west, you don't have a turn lane here. So you have a turn lane if you're coming east and you want to come onto Lime this way. You don't have a turn lane if you're coming from this way to go onto Lime. So to avoid any potential queuing issues with traffic coming south on Lime, moving the driveway a little bit further north to prevent stacking coming onto Beach Road seemed to make logical sense and development sense from that standpoint. So we were okay with that particular location. If it went any further north, I think staff may have had an issue because now we're talking about additional impacts to the residential areas to the north that we were trying to avoid with a project like this.
So you're gonna tear up that driveway that's not being used?
Correct. It'll still be landscaped and buffered. It's not just gonna be a hole in the ground, you know? So yes, but yes, that driveway would be removed. You also have some line of sight exhibits that were part of your packet overall that kind of gives you an idea of the size and scale of the potential project. The line of sight exhibits came a little bit earlier on in the process. So actually, what you see here is one of the original site plans that were submitted very early on in the process. But for the purposes of providing the line of sight, the distance, understanding the grades and the depths and the potential landscaping, the location of the wall, it still seemed appropriate to be able to include these into your package just to kind of give you a feel for what you're looking at going from north and south, especially from Beach Road to the building, to the wall, to the residential to the north off of Lime Street. With regards to the environmental considerations, as the applicant testified, there are no critical areas or natural resources. They are proposing to preserve certain heritage trees that they can. There are certain groups of trees that they would potentially have to remove to be able to construct the site. They would be required to go in front of the city's tree advisory board for removal of those trees. But they are going to be preserving several of the existing heritage trees that are on site. And they all happen to be in the... In that natural area that's there north of the wall. So you have, you know, you have a lot of the existing site there that's gonna be maintained with the existing vegetation. And then they're gonna be adding additional landscaping and buffering to those areas. For stormwater, they do have current discharge points along the Benita Beach Road right-of-way. And it appears that that's where the initial design is going to be sending the water. And I know it sounds like a broken record when I say this, but there aren't any allowances to provide or show additional runoff onto adjacent properties. You cannot negatively impact your neighbors with your stormwater. It's a hard line. There aren't any deviations or allowances beyond that line. This project is no different as far as the potential stormwater impacts on surrounding properties. And that's not just for the neighbors. That could be for the commercial uses that are on both sides as well. This site has to handle and address its own water issues. With regards to traffic, you heard Mr. Banks give his testimony. We also ran it through our traffic engineer, who is joining us virtually today, by the way, Tom Ross. If you do have any traffic questions for him. As far as the volume and to the overall roadway network, it isn't a project of significant impact, which is seventy-eight peak hour trips in the PM hour. And we do have Tom, who could speak more on that if you'd like. The other thing to keep in mind with traffic is that one of the things that we tend to be pretty hard-nosed about, and I'll use this one as an example, is whether or not it's possible to promote cross-access. When you promote cross-access, you could potentially take additional traffic off of your main roadways for another segment or two by giving them another parallel point to run. So for an example, you do have the Kinetico building here to the west, and they do have a driveway area that dead-ends at the property line. So initially, staff was exploring the possibility of making this one of the main entry points to the project and just utilize cross-access to be able to get to the site overall. We were sort of going back and forth on that, and in the end, we went against it. And the reason why is because that Kinetico property is not developed in accordance with your Beach Road overlay standards. So the building's set too far back, as an example. So if we were to require that driveway to be used as the access point for the property, you're now hindering this property from coming in and redeveloping under the standards that the city worked so hard for, because now there's an accessway in the way. It's one of the reasons why the building is pushed so close to Beach Road for this particular project. It has to be. That's what the code requires you to do. So it didn't... It didn't seem appropriate at the time to make that a focal point for access, which would preclude your neighbors from coming in and developing to the standards that the city has worked so hard to set. Now, there is still a note on the plan that says that when that neighboring property were to come in and redevelop, whenever that may be, the opportunity for cross-access can be reexamined. So depending on the flows that we see, depending on the potential uses that may be coming in, it could still happen. So it's not dead and gone. But initially, we felt this was a more appropriate way to handle the access, especially since this portion of Lime Street is a city-maintained roadway, being able to utilize that city-maintained roadway with the rear-line driveway. I'll go ahead and get back to the slides where we were. Oh, and also, keeping in mind with that as well, they are also required to build sidewalks along their frontage of Lime Street, which they do show on the plan. And they also show increasing the width of the existing sidewalk on Beach Road for the length of their frontage. Those are both requirements under the code, and they are meeting those requirements. So this is a picture of a future land use map overlay for the property. And everything that you see in red is designated as general commercial, which again promotes commercial uses. So that is the general commercial portion of the future land use map. And then you also have areas of medium-density residential and medium-density multifamily residential as well. But all the way up, you know, off of Lime Street, going up to, I believe that's Tangerine, on the south side of Tangerine, is all considered general commercial, future land use property for development purposes in that regard. In addition to the future land use, we just talked about the traffic impacts and the transportation elements. I won't belabor those points any more than I already have. And the remaining elements are not applicable to this particular request. So with that, similar to what Mary did in her staff report, we tried to do the same thing, where we lay out what the special exception approval criteria are for you to be able to review. And we sort of went one by one with those criteria in the staff report and gave our interpretation and our professional opinion of whether or not they met those criteria. So you have, you know, whether there exists a change or changing conditions that make the approval appropriate, testimony of the applicant, staff, the public, which you're hearing that today, performance and locational standards, compliance with the Benita Plan, protection of environmentally critical areas, compatibility with existing and planned uses, whether there'll be damage, hazard, or nuisance to persons or property, and then just general compliance with the zoning provisions found in LDC four. So going through those one by one, you have the first criteria, which involves whether there exists change or changing conditions that make the approval of the request appropriate. I know that's been an interesting criteria in the past to try and navigate through. The wording of that is very specific in particular for how you address that. So essentially, what you have here is the condition of the revised Benita Beach Road corridor overlay standards that were updated in 2019. Prior to that 2019 update, the property was still zone commercial. It still had commercial zoning and commercial entitlements. It was the update in 2019 that required a special exception approval for a list of allowable uses, including this particular one. So that's one of the reasons why we're here with that particular condition, is because they have to be. The code was changed in 2019. This is the approval process for that particular use. B and C, testimony of the applicant, which you just heard. You also have the complete backup in your application pack-up that includes the application itself, the narratives, the noise studies, the traffic impact statements, so on and so forth. The recommendation of staff, which is found in the staff report before you. Testimony of the public. You do have documentation in your packets for both neighborhood information meetings that they are required to hold, to get a feel for what the issues and concerns were from the neighbors. We did have a few of the... The sheets that the neighbors... The notices that we give to neighbors that let them know that the hearings are being held, and they have the opportunity to provide comments on those notices. We did receive a few of those back as well. And of course, I'm sure you're gonna have some public comment here on this one as well. And the main concerns that we saw coming from the public had to do with, you know, just what was talked about previously. You have traffic. You have noise. You have drainage. You have speeding. All very valid and vital concerns for a project anywhere in the city, not this particular one. So, you know, these are items that the city and staff do take seriously when it comes to how you're going to address those. When it comes to the traffic itself, you know, you do have the project not being one of significant impact overall from a number standpoint. But I also understand that, you know, one of the concerns that was... That you saw in the neighborhood information meeting minutes was that the ability to come out of the property and turn left to stay on Lime Street as opposed to turning right and heading towards Beach Road and the impacts that that would have on the adjacent neighborhood. I know that one of the things that was floated at the neighborhood information meeting, and I'm gonna kind of put you on the spot a little bit here, was the possibility of adding a sign at the intersection there of this driveway on Lime Street saying no left turn allowed to avoid left turns onto Lime Street that would potentially take you through the neighborhood. If that's something that the applicant wants to propose as part of their development order submittal, we can go ahead and review it. It didn't make sense to make it a staff condition because that is a city-maintained roadway. And to tell cars that you can't turn left onto a city-maintained roadway, I think you're kind of... It's a little bit of a slippery slope if you were to do...
You've done that on Burnwood, haven't you?
We did that on Burnwood for... That was tied directly to the traffic impact. So if... With the traffic impact itself, if it was more apparent, especially with the peak times, converting with the school that was right there across the street and the adjacent businesses. So if it is something the board would like us to entertain, I think staff is open to it. We just had a little bit of a concern from that aspect of it with it being a city-maintained roadway.
We did it at that daycare center. I'm sorry? We did that at the daycare center.
I think that's what the chairman was referencing, yes. So if it's...
Anyway, that's a sore point with me.
If it's something the board would like to propose, we're open to it. So the next criteria is consistency with the Benita Plan, the comprehensive plan. It's a commercial use that's located in a commercial future land use category for the city overall. With regards to the traffic elements, like we already discussed, it has fully constructed roadways. They're redoing the access point to help avoid potential queuing issues onto Lime Street and Beach Road. They're providing the necessary sidewalk improvements to Lime Street and Benita Beach Road. So we do feel that it checks the necessary boxes for compatibility with the Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan. With regards to the next criteria, which is criteria F, whether it meets performance and locational standards, and then also for protection of environmental areas, there are no deviations or variances that are requested as part of this application, which would influence performance or locational standards for use such as this. And there are no environmentally critical areas that were observed on site. In fact, some of the trees that were considered to be heritage trees, because they are of a certain size, the applicant is gonna work towards preserving those particular trees as part of this project. So we didn't see any negative impacts in that regard. With the next criteria, criteria H, which is compatibility with existing and planned uses, again, this is a property that is within a commercial zone of an overlay. It's within a commercial future land use category, and the project itself is commercial in nature. The site plan overall directs the intensity of the project towards Beach Road and away from the abutting residential areas. And then to better deal with that potential issue, you have the advent of the eight-foot-high solid wall along with the soundproofing. So not only is it gonna be a visual barrier for the site, it's also gonna be a nuisance barrier, if you will, to help capture some of the additional noise. And again, they do have the noise study that was in your packet. I believe it starts on page 117. So that's where that was. So for criteria I, whether it can cause damage, hazard, nuisance to persons or property, really what we're doing... really what we're doing there is that's where you're focusing a little bit more on, on the noise study. So in addition to the noise study, which showed compliance with the, with the city decibel readings, you're still going to have a project that is governed and regulated by the City of Benita Springs Noise Control Ordinance. It was one of the main reasons for the hours of operation, it was one of the main reasons why staff was okay with the hours of operation, because after those times, the allowable decibel levels change. So if you're after 10 o'clock at night, and I know they're only proposing nine, but if you're after 10 o'clock at night and before seven in the morning, the noise allowances are a lot less, yes. So they're, they're, they're within the confines of the noise ordinance for the decibels that they are permitted on a commercial site, which I think is a little bit over 70 decibels during the day, during working hours, if you will. And they were able to demonstrate compliance with that largely just with the wall itself and the building placement, the fact that we're adding the soundproofing and the additional landscaping along the wall, and then another additional buffer on the northern property line is going to also help to capture some of that additional noise. So because of all of that being part of this application, essentially non-negotiable for staff to do those things, we felt that it met that particular criteria. The next one, criteria J, is compliance with general zoning provisions and supplemental regulations within the, within the code that you have there. So again, they're within the Benita Beach Road Corridor overlay. A special exception is required as part of the overlay. They filed the necessary applications, they've held the required neighborhood information meetings, and the site has to be developed in accordance with the Land Development Code. No deviations, no variances are being requested as part of this application. So with all of that in mind, staff did feel that because they successfully demonstrated compliance with those criteria specifically, that they met the standards for a recommendation of approval from staff with the very specific conditions that are outlined in the staff report before you, meaning that you have to, it's valid for this application only and this applicant only. So if something falls through and somebody else wants to come take over the reins and try and do this car wash, no, they're going back through this process all over again. It's valid for this specific application only and tied to consistency with the site plan that is before you in your packet. We also have the requirement for soundproofing on the interior side of the wall to capture additional noise. The city noise ordinance remains in full force and effect with this project, the hours of operation being restricted from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and also understanding that any additional changes that the applicant seeks from this point on would require additional review and a potential additional approvals, and that if this special exception were to be approved, this does not guarantee that they will get a development order or a building permit. This is purely the, the zoning stage at this time. And then also, sort of to hammer the point home, understanding that this project needs to be developed consistent with the Benita Beach Road Corridor overlay and the supplemental requirements of the Land Development Code. So no deviations, no variances, you're, you're building it by the book. So with that in mind, if you have any questions for me, we have staff here who did the review. We have Tom Ross for traffic attending virtually, if you have any questions, or myself for the applicant.
Hey, Michael.
Yes, sir.
The material for that soundproofing outside that wall, what's that look, what's that made out of?
Hasn't, hasn't been, hasn't been decided yet. There's so many different ways you can go, and one of the things that we do is since, since we don't have a, a soundproofing standard as far as the material type, what we do is when they provide us the samples of what they want to do, they have to provide us the noise study data that goes along with that material, so that we better understand what the decibel reduction is going to be. And to us, the decibel reduction is more important than the material that you choose. We want to be able to promote the one that gives you the best decibel reduction. So we don't have a specific material carved out just yet. It'll come during the development order stage if they get to that point.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Mike.
Hi.
And then me.
We have permitted uses, we have non-conforming uses, we have uses that require variances. Could you explain what this beast called a special exception is? Why do we have such a thing?
Well, there's, there's a few different modes of thought for that, and in this latest standpoint, and I'm going to go from 2019 forward, because that's when this use turned to special exception as part of the Beach Road overlay. When you look at the uses that are within that overlay that require special exception, many of them tend to be uses that are a bit more auto-oriented. And the reason for that was because one of the driving points of that Beach Road overlay amendment in 2019 was to try to step away from purely auto-oriented uses and promote multimodal style uses, you know, uses that perhaps could also be served by, by bicycles, by sidewalks, so on and so forth. And that, if you were going to still have strongly vehicular uses in the overlay, they deserved an additional level of review and, and examination to determine whether or not they really can fit into the overlay. So even though, you know, this isn't going to be a highly pedestrian or bicycle-oriented use, the fact that, you know, they still had to provide the sidewalks, they had to provide the crosswalk access, they have to extend the sidewalk on Beach Road, which may or may not be used by anybody traveling to this specific site, those boxes still needed to be checked, and one of the ways you can mandate that to be the case is through the special exception approval process. So that, that, that was one of the, the big driving points, was to address auto-oriented uses and provide an additional level of review.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr.?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I've heard a lot of discussion today from several people about this is in the commercial zone. And, by the way, we could put a McDonald's in there, we could put a Culver's, we could put a this, we could put a that, that are more intense, the implication is that they're more intense and worse than the use that's being proposed here. I've never heard zoning discussed as a lesser of two evils, you know, theory. In other words, we should put the this in because there's something worse that could come along. Well, this is not a permitted use. This is a special exception use that requires further discussion, further conditions, and further approval, and ultimately, it has to meet all these criteria.
Yeah, if I could speak to that, sir, none of that was in staff's recommendation. That, that was, that was the applicant's position of why it should be approved. Staff reviewed it purely on the criteria that's before you. None of that was part of staff's recommendation.
I've heard you said it a couple of times today, that this is a commercial zone.
It's in a commercial zone, but as far as saying it's a lesser of two evils, as far as there's other things they could do, none of that was in staff's report. That wasn't part of staff's findings.
Okay. What is floodplain compensation? I've never heard that phrase before.
Michael Herrera, again, civil engineer with Grady Minor and Associates. So floodplain compensation is a calculation that has to be conducted when you're in a flood zone. A property either attenuate, or accepts or discharges water from surrounding properties. That analysis is called an importer-exporter analysis. So a property may, in the existing condition, be storing off-site water on the property. And post-development, that volume of water that was being stored on-site as an importer-analysis has to be available, the same amount of volume in the post-development condition. So in net, you're not, you're not reducing the amount of storage for the surrounding properties to store on our property.
Okay. And that would, that storage, if it's used, would have an impact on the vegetation that's there, right?
Yeah, we're going to be, so the, the floodplain compensation area would be utilized, for instance, there are some heritage trees in that area, right? So in order to create that, that volume for storage, what you do is you do remove soil down to control elevation, wet season water table. So yes, by creating floodplain compensation, you are absolutely affecting that vegetation. But we can work around heritage trees, so that, that area of the drip line, we try to keep the same. So it's going to be a combination of both, leaving some where it is today, and other than the ones we need to remove to create that floodplain compensation.
Okay, thanks. On page five, this is for you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
The request, this request is in addition to the noise study provided by the applicant, which largely demonstrates decibel compliance with the City of Benita Springs Noise Control Ordinance. Largely? Does it comply or does it not comply?
It, it complies. What I wanted to leave room with is some of the unknown factors when you do a noise study. Noise studies are nearly impossible to do with 100% certainty with calculation, because there's no such thing as perfect conditions for a noise study. So in an effort to not sell it as 100% compliance, but when you do the measurements at the property line with just the wall, it does meet compliance for the decibel range that's allowed for commercial uses. The fact that they're going to have the soundproofing and additional landscaping would lend one to believe that it would promote additional compliance with the noise study, but again, I, to say 100%, you don't want to do that, so.
And you, are we going to do any further studies on the noise, for example?
Are, are we going to do further studies on them?
Further studies? Because the study that, that was included in the application was in Wisconsin or something?
What, yeah, what they did was, so they did, they did two things, actually. They did a study of an actual working project that's similar to this one in nature to understand the amount of noise that is produced by a project like this. What they also did, though, was they went to this property and took measurements from the property lines for existing conditions to get an understanding of how much of it is background noise from traffic on Beach Road, those types of things, and sort of you, when, when you have those two factors in place, you're able to essentially calculate then what impact this project would have on that specific site. So that's the way their noise study was conducted. At this time, we wouldn't be requesting an additional one to be done. We would be requesting that they provide us the decibel calculations for whatever noise barrier material they use for the wall. We do want to see that data to understand, you know, how many, what the decibel reduction rate is of a barrier like that.
There's, you know, one very large banyan tree.
Yes, they're going to keep it.
And you're, it's right next to the, what, 10 feet away from the, the wall you're proposing?
Pretty close, yeah.
How are you going to, you're inside the drip line, obviously, with the wall. How are you going to protect that banyan rather than kill it during construction?
Do you mind if Michael answers that?
Yeah, go ahead.
And how does a ban, does a banyan tree like water?
So, Michael Herrera, Grady Minor, civil engineer, not a registered landscape architect, but we have one in our office, and we work the site with our landscape architect. And so our understanding is, that's one of the reasons I was talking about earlier, about floodplain compensation also, about not disturbing, disturbing that drip line. But like most trees, there is a percentage that you can impact of a drip line, and I forget what the percentage was, but in working with our LA, he looked at that banyan tree drip line, how much we are going to impact it, and he determined that it's salvageable.
You have that in writing?
I mean, there, if it, if it, there is, there is a Heritage Tree Advisory Board that we have to go in front of, so.
And you haven't been there yet?
No.
Okay, okay. All right, that, that's all.
Any other questions?
I got a couple, real quick. So we know stormwater runoff is going to go out to Benita Beach Road, run down the road, and then get sucked into the system, falls into the system through a culvert, right?
Correct.
So the rest of the water that we're washing cars with, may I call that wastewater? Is that a good term for it? That's a whole separate system, right? And it's going into the sewer system, just like where I run the sink or flush the toilet. 20% of that is recycled. I think I learned from the public hearing, 20% of that is recycled, and then the rest goes into the sewer system. So no soapy water, no wastewater is going to reach the river. Correct?
Correct.
Somebody get on mic and say that.
Correct.
That's all I have.
And you said that the Benita Beach Utilities has reviewed that and has no issues?
No issues, and they also have pretreatment requirements and things like that, that you remove certain additives before you discharge into the system. So they're going to have to get a permit with BSU to do all of that.
I'm just curious, is there a requirement to recycle 20%? I'll just do that. It's got to be an interesting system. Somebody's counting.
If I might, it, it's not atypical for these type newer systems to recycle water. One, they're paying for the potable water, so it makes sense if they can recycle some of that water, it alleviates some of the cost.
I'm through, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Now, in light of the audience, and I anticipate a lot of comments, I think what I would like to do is propose that we take a 15-minute break, reconvene at 11 o'clock. Before we take public comments, and may I please remind the public that your comments will be limited to four minutes. Thank you very much. We'll see you back in, at 11 o'clock.
Let me remind the board, please don't engage in comments with the applicant, staff.
What?
Just reminding the board that during those 15 minutes, please don't engage in comments with staff, the public, or the applicant, or each other.
Sunshine.
On my shoulder.